Okay, Mark, are you okay?
Good evening and welcome to this meeting of Troy City Council. It's Monday, March 20th, 7:00 PM. You are in council chambers. My name is William Lutz, President of Council. I see some folks standing in the back. I would let you know if you do want to come in and take a seat. There are plenty of seats available. This time we will begin our meeting with the invocation and the pledge of allegiance given this evening by Mr. Whitten. Please stand up.
As the council gathers here to make the decisions affecting the people of Troy, we ask for clarity of thought, open eyes to see the world from all angles, and opening compassionate hearts. Our most serious duty is to look at the community we share, the examples we make, and the legacies we leave. That should be our greatest and most courageous and noble intention. Let this be our most relentless charge. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic of which we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mrs. Knight, will you please call the roll?
Mr. Whitten?
Here.
Mrs. Sne?
Here.
Mr. Twist?
Here.
Mrs. Marshall?
Here.
Mr. Seaver?
President.
Mr. Phillips?
Here.
Mr. Schilling?
Present.
Mr. Rozell?
Here.
Mr. Pierce?
Present.
All members are present.
Thank you. Mrs. Knight, will you please read a summary of the minutes of the March 6, 2023, meeting of Troy City Council?
Minutes of Council, March 6, 2023. A public hearing was held in ordinance number O-10, 2023, regarding beekeeping in certain zoning districts. Committee reports, Community and Economic Development Committee recommended legislation be prepared to approve the final record plan of Troy Storage Plan Development. Finance Committee recommended legislation be prepared authorizing execution of opioid settlement agreements. Committee recommended that certain fees be adjusted. Resolution number R-17, 2023, signing opioid settlement agreements was given first reading and was adopted. Resolution number R-18, 2023, adjusting certain fees, was given first reading and adopted. Ordinance number O-10, 2023, establish beekeeping as an accessory use in certain zoning districts, was given a public hearing and second reading. Ordinance number O-11, 2023, accept final record plan Troy Storage Plan Development Industrial, PDI, first reading and adopted. Ordinance number O-12, 2023, accept the annexation of 59.798 acres, first reading and adopted, following various comments council during the 7:23.
It has been moved to approve the minutes.
It has been moved to approve the minutes by Mr. Phillips, seconded by Mr. Schilling. Mrs. Knight, will you please call the roll?
Mrs. Sne? Yes. Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mrs. Marshall?
Yes.
Mr. Seaver?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Schilling?
Yes.
Mr. Rozell?
Yes.
Mr. Pierce?
Yes.
Mr. Whitten?
Yes.
Minutes are approved.
Thank you, Mrs. Knight. Moving on to committee reports, we have a number of reports this evening. We will begin with the Community Partnerships Committee and two reports from Mr. Rozell.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This committee met on March 13th to consider a resolution to urge Congress and the Ohio Legislature to address rail safety in light of recent derailments. It is recommendation of this committee that legislation be prepared urging Congress and the Ohio Legislature to enact legislation to address rail safety. This committee is supportive of emergency legislation so that the resolution can be forwarded to the OML without delay. Respectfully submitted, Jeffrey Schilling, Todd Seaver, myself, William Rozell, as Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Rozell. Are there any comments or questions on this report? Seeing none, please continue.
On March 16th, committee members Rozell and Schilling met to consider recommending a notwithstanding ordinance for a Troy Truck Yard event on April 28th. Which event will include the sale and consumption of beer only on public property within the expanded Dora area? The location is South Walnut Street, East Main Street to East Franklin Street, and adjacent parking lot areas. As the Troy Area Chamber of Commerce will hold the temporary liquor permit, the legislation would include an agreement with that organization. It is recommendation of this committee that the notwithstanding legislation be prepared authorizing the sale and consumption of alcoholic beverages on public property for the Troy Truck Yard event planned April 28th, and agreement with the Troy Area Chamber of Commerce for that organization to sell beer on public property during the event. So that the liquor permit application can be submitted, this committee supports emergency legislation. Respectfully submitted, Jeff Schilling, Todd Seaver, and myself, as Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Rozell. Any comments or questions on this report? Seeing none, moving to the Finance Committee and Mr. Seaver for one report this evening.
Thank you, Mr. President. This committee met March 13th to review the recommendations of the Tax Incentive Review Council regarding the compliance status of the Troy Town Park TIF and the five enterprise zone agreements that were in place as of December 31st, 2022. Such review and report is required on an annual basis. The Tax Incentive Review Council recommends that the TIF agreement and the remaining five enterprise zone agreements be continued. We note that the Agreement Number 36 with Archibrasives, Inc. is not in compliance with the employment commitment. If Archibrasives, Inc. does not meet employee compliance in 2023, it is likely the agreement will be recommended to be terminated at the next review. It is the recommendation then of this committee that legislation be prepared, accepting the recommendation of the Tax Incentive Review Committee, that the five current enterprise zone agreements be continued, that Detroit Town Park TIF be continued, and that the city must file an annual report with the Ohio Development Service Agency by the end of March regarding the continuance of the agreements and the TIF. Committee supports emergency legislation. Respectfully submitted, Mr. Phillips, Mr. Rozell, and myself as Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Seaver. Are there any comments or questions on this report? Seeing none, we'll go to the Law and Ordinance Committee and Mrs. Sne with one report this evening.
Thank you, Mr. President. This committee met March 13th to review a recommendation that the city should request that a hearing be held regarding the advisability of the state's transferring the D1, D2, and D3 liquor permits issued to Railroad Restaurant A Partnership, doing business as Railroad Restaurant, 629 South Crawford Street, first floor, to the name of Old Railroad Bar and Grill Incorporated, doing business as Railroad Restaurant at the same address. The city has not been able to determine if complete information has been received regarding the applicant for review. Also, based on the zoning, a restaurant or bar is prohibited from operating at this location. It is the recommendation of this committee that legislation be prepared requesting that the Ohio Department of Liquor Control hold a hearing in Troy. The committee further supports emergency legislation so that the notice can be returned by April 3rd. And this is respectfully submitted by Mr. Phillips, Mr. Seaver, and myself as Chair.
Thank you, Mrs. Sne. Are there any comments or questions on this report? Seeing none, move on to the final two reports with the Recreation and Parks Committee. Mr. Whitten.
Thank you, Mr. President. This committee met on March 13th to consider use agreements for the June 24th and August 5th concerts at Treasure Island Park. Those concerts would include the sale and consumption of alcoholic beverages, and to further the consideration of temporary activation of the area of the Dora to include Treasure Island Park for the two concerts. It is the recommendation of this committee that legislation be prepared authorizing the Director of Public Service and Safety to execute the Treasure Island Park non-ticketed use agreement for the June 24th and August 5th, 2023 concerts at Treasure Island Park, and that legislation be prepared to authorize the temporary activation of the area of the Dora for those two concerts. That is respectfully submitted by Mr. Rozell, Mr. Schilling, and myself as Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Whitten. Are there any comments or questions on this report? Seeing none, please move on.
This committee also met on the 13th of March to consider a recommendation of the Board of Park Commissioners that the Board President be authorized to execute the Consent to Field Naming document at the Troy Memorial Stadium. Transferring ownership to the stadium to the Troy Schools was authorized in 2009, with the city retaining some deed restrictions and a right to grant exceptions thereto. The consent form would permit the stadium to be renamed Premier Health Field at Troy Memorial Stadium, with signage in a limited area. Premier would provide a contribution to a private fund of raising efforts to maintain needed improvements to the stadium. It is the recommendation of this committee that legislation be prepared authorizing the President of the Board of Park Commissioners to execute the Consent to Field Naming document at the Troy Memorial Stadium. This is respectfully submitted by Mr. Rozell, Mr. Schilling, and myself as Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Whitten. Are there any final comments or questions on this report? We have two oral reports for liquor permit application notices to be given by the Law and Ordinance Committee and Mrs. Sne.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Ohio Division of Liquor Control has transmitted the notice of the application for a new D1 permit for Speakeasy Ramen LLC, doing business as Speakeasy Miso, 101 West Main Street. A D1 permit is for carryout and on-premises consumption of beer until 1:00 AM. Troy Police Department has not recommended an objection or hearing request be filed. That has been announced. The Ohio Division of Liquor Control has transmitted the notice of the application for new D2 and D3 permits for Craft Event Bar Collective LLC, 12 North Cherry Street. This business will be located to the back of the Masonic Temple Building and plans to be involved in events at the building. Previously, the city received notice of a C1 permit for this applicant. A D2 permit is for wine and mixed beverages for on-premises consumption, or in original sealed containers for carryout only until 1:00 AM. A D3 permit is spirited liquor for on-premises consumption only until 1:00 AM. The police department has not recommended an objection or hearing request be filed.
Thank you, Mrs. Sne. Any comments or questions on these oral reports?
I have a question.
Mr. Seaver?
And I don't know maybe if that's what you're saying. If there's three applications on file and only two permits available, is it first come, first served?
They're for different types.
Typically is. Well, no, that's the D1. Your D1 has three applications on file with two permits available.
They may end up being on a waiting list. It is typically first come, first served, but I'm not sure how you get in line. They may also go out and pursue a Trex application, and if they do, then they'd have to come back here.
Come back to council for Trex, right?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Seaver. Any other comments or questions? Seeing none, we will enter into the business portion of tonight's meeting. We'll begin with the resolutions. We'll ask Mrs. Knight to read the first resolution of the evening, Resolution R-19, 2023. Unless you want to do that one first.
I'll do it with your public comments.
Oh, my gosh, I'm so sorry. I apologize. We have five resolutions and five ordinances up for discussion this evening by council. Now is the time for public comments on any of those items. You are invited to come to the podium, give your name and address. You have two minutes to address council. Anyone is welcome to come up at this time. Seeing no one coming up, we will now move into resolutions. We'll ask Mrs. Knight to read the first resolution of the evening, Resolution R-19, 2023.
Resolution number R-19, 2023. Resolution urging the legislative branches of the federal government, as well as the state of Ohio, to enact legislation to further protect the citizens of the city of Troy, Ohio, from the inherent dangers of a train derailment on the tracks located in or near the city of Troy, Ohio, and declaring an emergency. This is the first reading.
Move to suspend.
Second.
It has been moved to suspend the three reading rule by Mr. Pierce, seconded by Mr. Seaver.
Sure.
Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mrs. Marshall?
Yes.
Mr. Seaver?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Schilling?
Yes.
Mr. Rozell?
Yes.
Mr. Pierce?
Yes.
Mr. Whitten?
Yes.
Mrs. Sne?
Yes.
Moved to adopt?
Second.
It has been moved to adopt the resolution by Mrs. Sne, seconded by Mr. Seaver. The three reading rule has been suspended. Are there any final comments or questions? Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mrs. Marshall?
Yes.
Mr. Seaver?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Schilling?
Yes.
Mr. Rozell?
Yes.
Mr. Pierce?
Yes.
Mr. Whitten?
Yes.
Mrs. Sne?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Resolution is adopted.
Thank you, Mrs. Knight. Mrs. Knight, will you please read the next resolution of the evening, Resolution R-20, 2023?
Resolution number R-20, 2023. Resolution accepting the recommendations of the Tax Incentive Review Council and declaring an emergency. The Tax Incentive Review Council recommended that all the agreements be continued. This is the first reading.
Move to suspend.
Second.
It has been moved to suspend the three reading rule by Mr. Seaver, seconded by Mr. Schilling. Mrs. Knight, will you please call the roll?
Mr. Seaver?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Schilling?
Yes.
Mr. Rozell?
Yes.
Mr. Pierce?
Yes.
Mr. Whitten?
Yes.
Mrs. Sne?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mrs. Marshall?
Yes.
Moved to adopt?
Second. The three reading rule has been suspended. It has been moved to adopt the resolution by Mr. Twist, seconded by Mr. Whitten. Are there any final comments or questions? Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Schilling?
Yes.
Mr. Rozell?
Yes.
Mr. Pierce?
Yes.
Mr. Whitten?
Yes.
Mrs. Sne?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mrs. Marshall?
Yes.
Mr. Seaver?
Yes.
Resolution is adopted.
Thank you, Mrs. Knight. Mrs. Knight, will you please read the next resolution of the evening, Resolution R-21, 2023?
Resolution number R-21, 2023. Resolution accepting the recommendation of the Tax Incentive Review Council for the Troy Town Park TIF and declaring an emergency. The Tax Incentive Review Council recommended that this be continued, first reading.
Move to suspend.
It has been moved to suspend the three reading rule by Mr. Schilling, seconded by Mr. Whitten. Mrs. Knight, will you please call the roll?
Mr. Schilling?
Yes.
Mr. Rozell?
Yes.
Mr. Pierce?
Yes.
Mr. Whitten?
Yes.
Mrs. Sne?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mrs. Marshall?
Yes.
Mr. Seaver?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
The three reading rule has been suspended. It has been moved to adopt the resolution by Mr. Twist, seconded by Mr. Pierce. Are there any final comments or questions? Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mr. Rozell?
Yes.
Mr. Pierce?
Yes.
Mr. Whitten?
Yes.
Mrs. Sne?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mrs. Marshall?
Yes.
Mr. Seaver?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Schilling?
Yes.
Resolution is adopted.
Thank you, Mrs. Knight. Mrs. Knight, will you please read the next resolution of the evening, Resolution R-22, 2023?
Resolution number R-22, 2023. A resolution authorizing the city of Troy, Ohio, to submit a request to the Ohio Division of Liquor Control that a hearing be held on permit number D530060, and that such hearing be held in Troy, Ohio, and declaring an emergency. This is related to the liquor permit transfer associated with the restaurant. This is the first reading.
Move to suspend.
Second.
It has been moved to suspend the three reading rule by Mr. Twist, seconded by Mr. Phillips. Mrs. Knight, will you please call the roll?
Mr. Pierce?
Yes.
Mr. Whitten?
Yes.
Mrs. Sne?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mrs. Marshall?
Yes.
Mr. Seaver?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Schilling?
Yes.
Mr. Rozell?
Yes.
Moved to adopt.
Second.
The three reading rule has been suspended. It has been moved to adopt the resolution by Mr. Twist, seconded by Mr. Phillips. Are there any final comments or questions? Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mr. Whitten?
Yes.
Mrs. Sne?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mrs. Marshall?
Yes.
Mr. Seaver?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Schilling?
Yes.
Mr. Rozell?
Yes.
Mr. Pierce?
Yes.
Resolution is adopted.
Thank you, Mrs. Knight. Mrs. Knight, will you please read the next resolution of the evening, Resolution R-23, 2023?
Resolution number R-23, 2023. Resolution authorizing the President of the Board of Park Commissioners of the city of Troy, Ohio, to execute the Consent to Field Naming document for the Troy Memorial Stadium with the Troy City School District Board of Education. This was reported on this evening. This is the first reading.
Move to suspend.
Second.
It has been moved to suspend the three reading rule by Mr. Whitten, seconded by Mr. Twist. Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mrs. Sne?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mrs. Marshall?
Yes.
Mr. Seaver?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Schilling?
Yes.
Mr. Rozell?
Yes.
Mr. Pierce?
Yes.
Mr. Whitten?
Yes.
Moved to adopt.
Second.
The three reading rule has been suspended. It has been moved to adopt the resolution by Mr. Phillips, seconded by Mr. Schilling. Are there any final comments or questions? Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mrs. Marshall?
Yes.
Mr. Seaver?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Schilling?
Yes.
Mr. Rozell?
Yes.
Mr. Pierce?
Yes.
Mr. Whitten?
Yes.
Mrs. Sne?
Yes.
Resolution is adopted.
Thank you, Mrs. Knight. At this time, we have a very somber occasion that we traditionally do at these types of times, and so I will ask Mrs. Knight to please read the resolution in memoriam for Mr. Robert A. Fletcher.
A resolution in memoriam, Robert A. Fletcher, 1943, 2023. Whereas the members of council for the city of Troy recognize on behalf of all Troy citizens the service to our city by the late Robert A. Fletcher. And whereas Robert A. Fletcher was a longtime educator with the Troy City Schools Board of Education, serving as a teacher, administrator, and baseball coach from 1967 to 1981, and principal of Troy High School from 1981 to 1996, retiring in 1996. And whereas in 1978, Robert A. Fletcher was recognized as the Outstanding Educator of the Year by the Troy Area Chamber of Commerce. And whereas Robert A. Fletcher particularly served the city of Troy, Ohio, as a Troy City Council member from January 1, 1974, through December 31, 1977. President of Troy City Council from January 1, 1978, through March 25, 1979. Mayor of the city of Troy from March 26, 1979, through December 31, 1979. And began as President of Troy City Council from January 1, 1980, through April 1, 1980. And whereas Robert A. Fletcher was removed from our midst by death on March 17, 2023. Now therefore be it resolved by the council of the city of Troy, Ohio, that this expression of appreciation for the dedicated service of Robert A. Fletcher to this city and the citizens of this community be extended with sincere sympathy to the family of Robert A. Fletcher. Be it further resolved that a notation of this resolution be placed in the official records of the city of Troy, Ohio, and that the clerk of councils hereby directed and instructed to forward a duly attested and signed copy of this resolution to the family of Robert A. Fletcher.
Thank you, Mrs. Knight. Can we please have a motion from council to adopt the resolution?
Moved to adopt.
Second.
It has been moved by Mr. Rozell, seconded by Mr. Twist. Mrs. Knight, will you please call the roll?
Mrs. Marshall?
Yes.
Mr. Seaver?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Schilling?
Yes.
Mr. Rozell?
Yes.
Mr. Pierce?
Yes.
Mr. Whitten?
Yes.
Mrs. Sne?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
The resolution is adopted. I'll now pass it around for signature.
Thank you, Mrs. Knight. I do know that the family of Mr. Fletcher is in the audience. If you wish to address council and say anything, you are more than welcome at this time to come to the podium.
Thank you very much, members of council. My name is Rich Fletcher, Bob's younger son. On behalf of my sister Lisa, my brother Rob, I thank you for this tremendous honor. Dad loved Troy very much. When he retired and he moved to Florida in 1996, it was not because he didn't love Troy, but he wanted to live a very active outdoor lifestyle. And if Troy were a little bit warmer and on the ocean, he would have been here for the rest of his life. But he lived in Troy longer than any place he ever lived and still called Troy home. I know he came back and saw many of you often. He had great friendships here, and we are very honored for this resolution, and we thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Fletcher. I know Mr. Rozell has some...
Hey, Rich, before you leave, and this may be out of order, but we're going to do it anyway. To you, Lisa and Rob, on behalf of the people that I've called being since Friday, former players, teachers, staff, you have a deep sympathy. And also that we want you to know, and they want you to know, that they appreciate everything your father did for us through education, coaching, friendship, and service to Troy.
Thank you.
Any other comments or questions? Thank you. Yeah, Mr. Schilling?
I moved to Troy in 1968 as a senior at Troy High School. And Mr. Fletcher was in his second year of teaching government, which was the required course to graduate.[1492.23] And I thought he was a tremendous teacher. I was very impressed with him as an individual. And it truly made my one year at Troy High School unique. And I really appreciated him. And, you know, he was, I would see him on the street afterwards or bump into him, and you know, it was like, you know, we were friends. You know, just, he always was, he remembered us and remembered me. And just, you know, I thought that was remarkable. And so again, I appreciate his teaching and everything else that he's done for the community of Troy. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Schilling. Mrs. Knight, we'll move on to ordinances. Would you please read the first ordinance of the evening, ordinance O-10, 2023?
Ordinance number O-10, 2023, an ordinance establishing section 1151.16 of the zoning code of the city of Troy, Ohio, related to beekeeping as an accessory use in the A agricultural district, AR agricultural residential district, R1, single-family residential district, R2, single-family residential district, R3, single-family residential district, R3B, single-family residential district, and the R4, single-family residential district. This has been recommended for approval by the Troy Planning Commission. It's at a public hearing, and this is the third reading.
Move to adopt. Second.
It has been moved to adopt the ordinance by Mr. Twist, seconded by Mr. Phillips. Are there any final comments or questions? Mrs. Knight, will you please read the, please read the roll?
Mr. Seabird?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Schilling?
Yes.
Mr. Rozell?
Yes.
Mr. Pierce?
Yes.
Mr. Whitten?
Yes.
Mrs. Sneak?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mrs. Marshall?
Yes.
Ordinance is adopted.
Thank you, Mrs. Knight. Mrs. Knight, will you please read the next ordinance of the evening, ordinance O-13, 2023?
Ordinance number O-13, 2023, ordinance authorizing the director of public service and safety of the city of Troy, Ohio, to execute a Treasure Island non-ticketed use agreement for 2023 events at Treasure Island Park. This covers the dates of June 24 and August 5, 2023. First reading.
Move to suspend. Second.
It has been moved to suspend the three reading rule by Mr. Seabird, seconded by Mr. Pierce. Mrs. Knight, will you please call the roll?
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Schilling?
Yes.
Mr. Rozell?
Yes.
Mr. Pierce?
Yes.
Mr. Whitten?
Yes.
Mrs. Sneak?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mrs. Marshall?
Yes.
Mr. Seabird?
Yes.
Move to adopt. Second.
The three reading rule has been suspended. It has been moved to adopt the ordinance by Mr. Phillips, seconded by Mr. Seabird. Are there any final comments or questions? Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mr. Schilling?
Yes.
Mr. Rozell?
Yes.
Mr. Pierce?
Yes.
Mr. Whitten?
Yes.
Mrs. Sneak?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mrs. Marshall?
Yes.
Mr. Seabird?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Ordinance is adopted.
Thank you, Mrs. Knight. Mrs. Knight, will you please read the next ordinance of the evening, ordinance O-14, 2023?
Ordinance number O-14, 2023, ordinance permitting use of certain real property in the designated outdoor refreshment area for use of a designated outdoor refreshment area for events on June 24, 2023, and August 5, 2023. First reading.
Second.
It has been moved to suspend the three reading rule by Mr. Whitten, seconded by Mr. Schilling. Mrs. Knight, will you please call the roll?
Mr. Rozell?
Yes.
Mr. Pierce?
Yes.
Mr. Whitten?
Yes.
Mrs. Sneak?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mrs. Marshall?
Yes.
Mr. Seabird?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Schilling?
Yes.
Move to adopt. Second.
The three reading rule has been suspended. It has been moved to adopt the ordinance by Mr. Whitten, seconded by Mrs. Sneak. Are there any final comments or questions?
And our temporary, everybody signed off that we need to get sign off for the temporary activation?
We have a...
Park board, I guess.
Okay. Any other comments or questions? Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mr. Pierce?
Yes.
Mr. Whitten?
Yes.
Mrs. Sneak?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
No.
Mrs. Marshall?
Yes.
Mr. Seabird?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Schilling?
Yes.
Mr. Rozell?
Yes.
Ordinance is adopted.
Thank you, Mrs. Knight. Mrs. Knight, will you please read the next ordinance of the evening, ordinance O-15, 2023?
Ordinance number O-15, 2023, ordinance authorizing the use of public areas for the 2023 Troy Truck Yard Event, notwithstanding conflicting provisions of the Troy Codified Ordnances, and further approving the use of an area for the sale of beer subject to the issuance of proper permits by the State of Ohio and procurement of liquor liability insurance, and authorizing the Director of Public Service and Safety of the city of Troy, Ohio to enter into an agreement with the Troy Area Chamber of Commerce, therefore, and declaring an emergency. This is for the Troy Truck Yard Event on April 28. First reading.
Move to suspend. Second.
It has been moved to suspend the three reading rule by Mr. Seabird, seconded by Mrs. Sneak. Mrs. Knight, will you please call the roll?
Mr. Whitten?
Yes.
Mrs. Sneak?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mrs. Marshall?
Yes.
Mr. Seabird?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Schilling?
Yes.
Mr. Rozell?
Yes.
Mr. Pierce?
Yes.
Move to adopt. Second.
The three reading rule has been suspended. It has been moved to adopt the ordinance by Mr. Whitten, seconded by Mr. Schilling. Are there any final comments or questions? Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mrs. Sneak?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
No.
Mrs. Marshall?
Yes.
Mr. Seabird?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Schilling?
Yes.
Mr. Rozell?
Yes.
Mr. Pierce?
No.
Mr. Whitten?
Yes.
Ordinance is adopted.
Thank you, Mrs. Knight. Mrs. Knight, will you please read the last ordinance of the evening, ordinance O-16, 2023?
Ordinance number O-16, 2023, an ordinance changing the zoning of parcel number D08101788 in the city of Troy, Ohio, from M2 Light Industrial District to a planned development industrial, PDI, and approving the general plan of Troy Storage Ends of America Plan Development Industrial. This is located at 1271 Breckner Drive. The Troy Planning Commission has recommended approval of the rezoning. There'll be a public hearing on the rezoning at the next meeting.
Thank you, Mrs. Knight. And in consideration of that public hearing, this will stand as the first reading. We've concluded our ordinances, and it is my pleasure to call for the last time to the podium, Ms. Andrea Keller, our executive director of Troy Main Street.
Hello. I'm actually going to pass a few things around for everyone. Good evening. As Mr. Letz said, my name's Andrea Keller. I'm the executive director of Troy Main Street. I think I'm familiar with everybody at this point. On behalf of Troy Main Street, our board of directors, our staff, and our volunteers, I would like to thank the city council for your continued support over the years. And we, each year, we like to come and give you a little update of what we've been up to in the last year and what we're looking forward to in the new year. And so just for anybody who doesn't know, Troy Main Street is a nationally accredited organization, and we reserve that accreditation from Heritage Ohio, which is our statewide parent organization. And then they report up to the National Main Street, Main Street America organization. And that organization is part of the National Trust for Historic Preservation, and they started Main Street programs years ago to preserve historic downtown. So we follow what National Main Street does, which is called the four-point approach, which are basically four categories that all of our work falls into, and those are design, events and promotions, organization, and economic vitality. And so tonight, I thought I'd walk you through each one of those and just give you a quick update of what we've done in 2022 and what we're looking forward to in 2023. So design is the first point in Main Street, and that it pertains to anything related to the aesthetics of downtown. And so each year, they can look different, what we're working on. This past year in 2022, we worked with the city to update the design guidelines that Planning Commission uses. And then as part of that, we also created a mural, guidelines for a mural program that we will be implementing hopefully this year. Well, we will be implementing it this year. I shouldn't say hopefully. And that, those guidelines will then become a part of the design guidelines. We also worked on the mural program, acquiring some funding. So we've gotten a grant from the Ohio Arts Council. That's a matching grant. And we're going to be partnering with the Troy Chamber of Commerce to make the first mural, or first few murals happen. And then you all were kind enough to grant us an additional $5,000 in our funding in 2022. And we decided in 2022, our board voted to take that money and set that aside into a mural fund. And so that, that money, our goal is to have a fund that people can donate to if they want to specifically support murals. And we also had 52 storefront planters downtown last year in the summer. I'm sure you're all familiar with that. And then we really amped up our downtown cleanup days. We did several downtown cleanup days. We had been doing those in COVID with our board, and last year decided it was time to get more people involved. And so we posted to Facebook that we had a downtown cleanup day, and we had over 50 community members show up to help pick up trash downtown. So that was great, and we will continue those. So for design in 2023, our committee is working on creating a new logo for Troy Main Street. We're going to be doing a little bit of rebranding. If you see our logo now, that is a building corbeled, in case you didn't know. But that's confusing to some people. So we are looking at some, some new ideas, and we've got some great things in the works that hopefully we'll be able to share with you soon. And we also will be really implementing this mural program. The funding that we receive from Ohio Arts Council has to be used up this year, so we'll be moving forward with that. We have our sculptures on the square program returning in 2023. This year's theme is wind and water, and we've selected 25 sculptures that will be downtown this year. And we are continuing to work with the city. That is done in large part due to a grant from the Troy Foundation, but also sculptures on the square would not be possible without the city's street department. And we had so many compliments on them in 2021 and are just eternally grateful for their help. And then this year, we're actually increasing the number of storefront planters, up to 70 planters. Not everybody who wanted one last year got one. And then continuing our downtown cleanup days. Our second point of Main Street is promotion. And so that is all of the events that we do downtown. That's probably what we're most known for. So in 2022, we had 12 First Friday Events. We hosted our Taste of Troy Trivia event, which is a fundraiser, but also features our downtown businesses. We helped with the Great Ohio Bicycle Adventure. We helped with Donut Jam and bringing people downtown the night before the Tour Day Donut Race. We continued our Chocolate Walk, which is again a fundraiser for Troy Main Street, but it also features our downtown businesses. And then we continued our Hometown Halloween in partnership with the Troy Noon Optimist and the Grand Illumination, our big tree lighting event, in partnership with the city. And then we also continued our Fridays on Proudie concert series, which we do with a grant from the Troy Foundation in partnership with the Troy Hainer Cultural Center. In 2023, we'll once again have 12 First Friday Events. Our Taste of Troy Trivia is happening this weekend. We still have a few tables left if anyone wants to come. We will continue Donut Jam, the Chocolate Walk, Hometown Halloween, Grand Illumination, and Friday's on Proudie. So all those classic events that we love downtown. The third point of Main Street, economic vitality. This committee in the last year worked on updating our walking maps. So that's one of the items I gave you. Yes, the first item is an events calendar. That's just for you to have to take home and put on your refrigerator. We updated our downtown walking maps, and we worked with the city to do this. And so these now match what's in the kiosk downtown, so that there's a little bit more cohesiveness. And then we also have some Excel documents that have really detailed information with all of this, so that we know when a business goes out to replace them. So that should make updating those easier. We also worked with the city to implement a facade grant program. It was a one-time program that we did with some funding the city had left over from COVID money. And we were able to award 12 facade grants to different buildings downtown. And that was $150,000 that the city allotted toward those. That was matching funds. So there was a big need for that. We also worked with the city to implement the DORA changes and to just work with businesses and evaluate what changes needed to be made, and then to bring those to you all, which you all know, we did that. This year, we're working, we'll continue to keep our walking maps edited and updated. We'll be finishing up those facade grant programs. Those have to be completed by June. And then one new project that our Economic Vitality Committee is going to be working on is taking an inventory of the downtown, because we have a pretty good sense of what we have downtown on the first floor of the buildings. But we'd like to have a complete inventory that has some office, office spaces, apartments, so we know what's on the second and third floors of buildings to just help guide us in our work. So. And then the fourth point of Main Street is operations, which is just kind of the logistical side of Main Street. We are a 501(c)(3) organization, so this is where all of our governance stuff falls into place and our funding. And so the city is a big funder of Troy Main Street. And then the remaining, the remaining funds for Troy Main Street come from sponsorships from events, our business members, fundraisers that we host, grant funding, and then through individual donors. So we are really thankful to you all for your continued support. It is really helpful to us. And as Mr. Letz said, I am leaving Troy Main Street. I have about two weeks left. And so if there's anything that I can do for anybody, my last day is March 31. If there's anything that you need from me, please get with me. And then as soon as we have a new executive director, our board will make sure that they get in touch with you all. And just another note, Brian Beg is the president of Troy Main Street right now. So in the meantime, if you need anything from him, or Eric Paris is our vice president, they can help you out. So any questions for me?
Any comments or questions for Ms. Keller?
Nice job. Oh, thank you.
I have a statement. I'd like to make it to our friend Andrea. You took a blank space, and you made it our song. I hope you don't shake it off. And your love story with Troy will continue forever. And for those of you who don't understand that, Ms. Keller does. Best of future to you.
I'm trying to think of a good comeback, but I'm on the spot. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Andrea, and good luck to you and your future endeavors. Mrs. Knight, do we have any communications or announcements this evening?
Still a reminder about filing financial disclosure statements if they've not been filed.
Thank you, Mrs. Knight. We'll move on to comments and officials. Mayor Oda.
I have nothing this evening. Thank you.
Thank you. Mayor, Director of Public Service and Safety, Mr. Tidderington.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I have nothing this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Tidderington. Director of Law, Mr. Kerber.
I detect a theme, so I have nothing either.
Will our city auditor keep the streak alive? Mr. Friggin?
Thank you, Mr. President. I have nothing at this time.
I will, I will add something. As many of you may know, I am the executive director of DuPAC. And yesterday, we had our donate and skate event at Holbar Arena. 200 individuals come by, and we had over 600 canned goods donated that will be going to food pantries throughout Miami County. Just continues to show what a wonderfully generous community we live in. Thank you to Mr. Seiler and his entire staff at the Holbar Arena for allowing us to use the facility. Do any council members have any comments this evening?
I...
Mr. Twist?
I think it was in our notes. When is the spring cleanup? Is that coming up in April here? I just, sorry. My iPad died and...
And winters die in Little...
But is spring cleanup April 10? Is it April 10?
Spring cleanup is April 10 through the 14th. Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Twist. Any other comments or questions from council members this evening? Do any staff members have any comments if they wish to have this evening? We now open it up for audience comments. If you wish to address council on any topic, you are invited to come to the podium, give your name and address, and take as much time as you wish to consume.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Deb Hogseth. I live at 421 South Plum Street here in Troy. I'm a volunteer with Move to Amend Miami County. In advance of the May primary, Move to Amend Miami County will survey candidates from mayor and city council about their views on corporate power and big money in politics, and the need for an amendment to the U.S. Constitution that makes two things clear. One, constitutional rights belong to natural persons only, not state-chartered entities such as corporations, associations, unions, and nonprofits. And two, money spent on political campaigns is not protected speech and shall be regulated. We will share candidate responses to the questionnaire with Troy voters, so they will learn where candidates stand on these issues. And by the way, Move to Amend does not support or endorse any candidate for office, regardless of their response or non-response to the questionnaire. Now, why should Troy voters be concerned about local candidates' positions on corporate power and big money in politics? Two of the biggest news stories in the past few months illustrate very well why we should all be concerned about corporate power and big money in politics. I'm talking about the Norfolk Southern train derailments in East Palestine and Springfield, and the public corruption scandal involving First Energy, Generation Now, and Larry Householder. These two examples alone show how corporate power and big money have been at work in Ohio, putting profits over people, raiding taxpayer wallets, and influencing elections, public policy, and regulations that should be in place to protect the public welfare and the environment. In response to the train derailments, Troy residents have turned to city officials with questions about rail safety in our area. Tonight, council adopted a resolution urging Congress and the Ohio Legislature to enact legislation to address rail safety. And I think that is awesome, and I applaud you. However, as long as corporations like railroad companies have the power to claim constitutional rights and to spend big money to influence elections and lobby against safety regulations, we might not get the results we want. So how did corporations like railroads get this power? The Constitution didn't give it to them. The U.S. Supreme Court did. Over the course of 137 years, the Supreme Court has decided that a corporation is a person with the exact same rights as you and me, and that spending money on political campaigns is protected speech. The only way to correct these misguided doctrines is through a constitutional amendment that puts power back in the hands of citizens and allows more voices to be heard, not just those with the most money. The amendment is not a silver bullet, but it is a critical first step to restoring and preserving our representative democracy. The elected representatives most closely connected to citizens are those at the local level. We need to know where area candidates stand. Are they on the side of the people, which includes small business owners and family farmers and cattle ranchers? Or are they on the side of large corporations and the ultra wealthy? Our survey of candidates will help us find out. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to address council? Please come forward and give your address.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is DeeDee Wisman. I live at 2503 Renwick Way in Troy. I want to tell you why I support national move to amend in our local Miami County group. It's late in life, I know, but I've been thinking lately about the juxtaposition of capitalism and democracy. From the earliest history of America, American courts have ruled in ways that favored corporations in the promotion of capitalism. I have nothing against capitalism, and certainly I'm in favor of democracy. So public education as well, work to promote capitalism. And through the years, corporations have grown to become mega entities with great power and influence in our lives that most Americans don't even think about or even recognize. Yes, I know, not all in a bad way, of course. But now we have huge corporations affecting every aspect of daily life, not always favorable. But now we have huge corporations affecting every aspect of daily life, not always favorably. These areas would be in finance and banking, pharmaceuticals, utilities, healthcare, transportation, agribusiness, oil and chemical, real estate, and so on. Then the great gift that Deb mentioned previously, when the Supreme Court ruled in 2010 that corporations are entitled to all the rights that the Constitution intended for human beings. So where does that leave us, the people, in our democracy? Is there equal opportunity for all people to achieve their goals of affordable housing, transportation, nutritious food, and childcare? Also access to adequate medical and mental health care, quality publication, and so on? What about folks that do not have the abilities or resources to best use capitalism to achieve those goals? How does our democracy extend to them as well as to corporations? How often have you heard there will always be the haves and the have-nots? Most of us here are probably haves. What should we be doing for the have-nots? Surely not by continuing to support corporations who may use lack of regulation and great wealth to hinder democracy for all the people for which it was intended. And then lastly, there is no time for me to express the depth of my dismay at how unfathomable, I'm not saying that right, amounts of money are spent to elect those who put the profits of corporations over the basic needs of all Americans. The passage of a constitutional amendment making it absolute that the rights granted by the Constitution are for natural persons only and money spent in elections shall be regulated. This is the first really important big step. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ben Southerly, Troy Historic Preservation Alliance, 110 and 1/2 West Main Street in Troy. Before I begin my comments, I would just like to commend Andrea Keller for her stellar service to the Troy community through Troy Main Street. Our organization has partnered with Troy Main Street several times. And Andrea always did the right thing. And just as she mentioned in her comments, Troy Main Street has its roots in historic preservation. And under Andrea's watch, that organization continued to honor its roots. So thank you, Andrea. Good evening, Troy elected officials and staff. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. THPA would like to acknowledge, first of all, that the city of Troy filed complaints in court last week as part of code enforcement activities involving the 112 to 118 West Main Street building. We understand that this can be a complicated process and this is a step that needed to happen. I have a couple of questions this evening concerning the sidewalk improvements that will be happening soon in front of the 112 to 118 West Main Street building. My understanding through a public records request is that the city plans to put a wire mesh or tarp support system along the damaged roof line facing West Main Street to ensure bricks do not fall on the construction workers during their work. Is my understanding correct on this?
Mr. Tidderington.
It is not. That is something that has been suggested by one of the structural engineers. That is one of the options that we have pushed back on the property owner to look at. If that is to occur, that would be by the property owner, not by the city.
Okay. And so there will be a means by which the work can be completed, though?
That is the hope.
Okay. We'll check back in.
Well, I don't mean to sound coy about that, Ben, but if we don't have any kind of agreement or anything, that's just what we have proposed through the structural engineers. They're working out different options. Whether the property owner decides to do it or not, that's in his court, if you will, no pun intended.
Can I ask a question? If the property owner doesn't cooperate, does that risk the project being delayed?
It does.
Any idea about how long or?
No.
So as long as the property owner is non-cooperative, no, nothing can happen?
Well, I guess at this point, since he looks like he's getting a little uncomfortable across from me, I would defer to the law director. But since it is in court.
Okay. I understand.
Is there any reason the city could not work with Miami County to make arrangements for more permanent repairs on that building and then send the property owner a bill?
There's, if I can jump in here, Mr. Southerly. There's been a lot of discussions and there's a lot of things on a lot of different fronts. And right now, I don't think that there's a lot of definite resolution at that point in time. So I don't know if the city can answer that question at this point.
Just for the record, it would be outrageous if taxpayers have to help pay for any kind of Band-Aid in order to continue with the construction work, especially while the property owner is receiving $24,000 in public funds for facade work on three other buildings that he owns downtown. As we work to resolve this task on West Main Street, I would like to remind the city council that we have an unresolved matter involving the Troy Planning Commission. Three-fourths of the planning commission's business is focused on the historic overlay district in downtown Troy. And yet there are no appointed planning commission members who live downtown, work at businesses downtown, or own property downtown. This is a very problematic disconnect, and it is up to the city council to address it and solve it. If council members are not comfortable with the downtown community's proposal to add two seats to the planning commission, perhaps it is time for you to consider creating an independent body that will be responsible for making decisions that affect the downtown and having downtown stakeholders serve on it. I would ask you, what are your ideas for addressing this problem? We have some elected officials sitting at the dais who like to say government is the problem. My question is, what is going to be done to address this issue? It is a problem, and it goes well beyond the situation at 112 to 118 West Main Street. We will continue to push for a resolution to this issue until it is resolved. And we would love to work with you or staff to solve it. We are also looking to the council to address the lack of opportunity for public comment at Troy Planning Commission meetings. We regularly have folks who attend those meetings who are not given the opportunity to provide input and perspective. This is a basic tenet of good government, something that other Miami County cities permit during their planning commission meetings. The current mayor is aware of this situation and apparently is comfortable with the status quo. Council has the power to address this, and we would ask that you do so. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Southerly. Any other residents?
I'll put this right here for a minute, if I may. Brother Bear on the 105 Prestwood Drive. I have a few things I'm going to address tonight. First of which is rail safety. Now, y'all passed a resolution tonight urging Congress to enact legislation regarding rail safety. Y'all have to excuse my voice, I throw the horse tonight after the weekend, but I'll try to muddle through. I'd like to share with you a statement that was recently provided by President Biden on the Federal Railway Safety Act of 2023, which is a recently enacted piece of legislation from Senators Vance and Brown. This is from presidentjoebidenatthehouse.gov. And I quote, "I applaud the bipartisan group of senators for proposing rail safety legislation that provides many of the solutions that my administration has been calling for. This legislation provides us with tools to hold companies accountable, to prevent terrible tragedies like the Norfolk Southern derailment in East Palestine, and to make those communities whole." And I think we can add Springfield to that as well. He goes on to say, "This legislation strengthens safety requirements for all trains carrying hazardous materials and phases in newer, safer tank cars over the next two years, not over the next decade. It will increase safety by requiring hot box detectors every 10 miles to prevent derailments like the one that we saw in East Palestine. It increases hazmat fees for railroads to pay for grants to train state and local firefighters and other first responders to respond to hazmat incidents. The legislation will also dramatically increase fines for safety violations from the current cap of $225,000 to the greater of $1 million or 1% of a railroad's annual operating income, which for the largest carriers like Norfolk Southern could be more than $50 million." This bill will make important progress, and we need to even do even more, like require state-of-the-art braking systems, provide more funding for federal safety inspections, invest in worker safety, fortify state emergency management and response, and hold companies like Norfolk Southern accountable, not just for the immediate damage, but also for the long-term health and economic damage to communities like East Palestine. I encourage Republicans and Democrats alike to move quickly to advance these common sense rail safety measures and send me a bill to sign into law, end quote. What I'd like to ask this council is, does that resolution that you passed tonight specifically address this act in general? Or are you asking for further legislation that would address rail safety? I'd like to hear some answers on that.
I believe it actually addresses both of those concerns, to be quite honest. I think we are trying to get the Federal Rail Safety Act adopted in whatever final form it may be. We're not sure what it is. But we're also using this resolution to press our state legislature to come up with reasonable regulations as well.
Thank you. Secondly, and I see my friend Mr. Hamilton's in the room tonight, but I don't want to steal too much of his thunder. But I want to ask a question. With the resolution that was passed tonight for the naming rights to the Troy Stadium football field, Mr. Seaver, did that ever come to the Human Relations Commission?
Hasn't.
With the talk about Move to Amend and corporate greed, if you will, I think it's important that we, and I'd like to encourage the Human Relations Commission, to take a look at naming rights and to come up with a policy that encourages diversity in naming rights. Just because you throw money at a project does not mean that you should be able to place your name on anything and everything. We have saved our souls to corporate greed when we do this. I honestly believe that. We have saved our souls to corporate greed. Just because a corporation throws their money at a project doesn't mean they should get to put the name on it. So I would like to see this Human Relations Commission put forth a common sense policy regarding diversity in naming, because I think it's thoroughly needed. Finally, I want to address the elephant in the room, and it was talked a little bit about tonight by Mr. Southerly, and that is 112 to 118 West Main Street. Two months ago, I came before this council and I said, and it was right after the repair orders were issued, and I asked the question, "Do you really think he's going to follow those orders?" At that time, I said, "No, he's not." Well, here we are, March 20th, and I hate to say those four little words, but I'm going to say them. I told you so. I said then, and I will say now, he is going to drag this out and delay it. And I have heard as much that Mr. Tidderington put out an email, excuse me, saying that work has been done on the building. Mr. Tidderington, I'd like to ask you, if you are asserting in the email that work has been done on the building, have you or the building inspectors been granted access to the building? Because everything I've been told is that Mr. Kimmel is refusing anybody to access the building.
Mr. Behringer, the property maintenance orders are on the exterior of the building. Our staff has been out and has surveyed the outside of the building. These property maintenance orders don't have anything to do with the inside of the building. So there's no need for us to access, to inspect, or to put any kind of orders on property maintenance.
It seems to me, Mr. Tidderington, that you're putting forth some conflicting messages, because I drive by that building every day, and I don't see what any work has been done on that building. So if you can point to me what's been done, I'd like to know, because I just don't see what has been done. So either there's some serious stuff going on. And I have to then question the preference of treatment this owner is getting. Because I've said it before, and I'm glad Mr. Davis is here to hear this, because if any property owner within the city of Troy you would have total ignorance or often ignored or doubt on them like by a sunrise. No doubt about it. I see it every time I read the council packet. I see it every time I read the council packet. Presidential property owners getting cited for this, cited for that, cited for this, cited for that. Why are we not putting these? Why would it take three years, two and a half years, or whatever, to put these kind of orders on Mr. Kimmel? That should have been done from the start. That's another failure on the part of city administration, and that needs to change. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Behringer. Anyone else wish to address counsel tonight? See, no, this meeting is adjourned. Our next meeting will be April 3rd.
Mr. Letz, I forgot. Anyone who's interested, the at-large.
I'm sorry. Go ahead.
I'm sorry. For anyone who's interested, the at-large members approximately quarterly have a meeting where we go out to the community. That will occur this Saturday, March 25th, at 9:30 at Hayner. So if anybody who hears this or read it in the paper or is present has any issues and don't feel comfortable coming to the dais or wish to discuss anything, there will be this Saturday at 9:30 at Hayner. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Seaver.